Good evening, everyone. Grand Forks City Council's Committee, the whole, Monday, April 26th, under item one, welcome to 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock. Here. Cavani. Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
We have a forum.
Great, thank you. Under discussion items, item 2.1, the application for class 1.1 Craft Field Beer Alcohol Beverage License from Expedition League, Inc., for use at Craft Field. Good evening, Mr. Starstead.
Yes, thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. The item that you have before is an application for, it's a class 8.1 alcoholic beverage license, which is a craft field beer license. This request is coming from Expedition League. It's been a very long time since we've had a license in this class that's been issued, so we thought it appropriate to review the fee that's associated with this fee, with this type of license and its comparables. Maybe a little history on this before I ask Mr. Wagner from Expedition to come up and speak to you. This class of license was created back in 1996 at the request of Grand Forks Professional Baseball, who bought a professional baseball franchise called The Varmints to Craft Field in 1996, and then what, we had the Channel Cats from 98 to 2000. That was the last time this class of license has been issued. This fee had been set equivalent to our class seven, which is the golf course license, which also includes, besides beer, includes wine and liquor. Realizing the craft field license is limited to the number of days, and as beer only, we do recommend that we adjust this fee to half of what the, it originally was set at. So that would reduce it down to $550 from $1,100. And that would also put this in line with a similar license type that's in Dickinson, North Dakota. And this information is provided to you in your staff report. We do, though, have a representative here tonight from Expedition League, and I would like to ask Mr. Steve Wagner, he is in the audience, if he could just come up here to the podium, introduce himself, talk to you a little bit about what their league is looking at bringing to Grand Forks, and is also available for your questions. I will just add, it has come up since the staff report was written, that we, there is interest to look at changing this license a bit. Right now, it's restricted to disposable cups only, and sounds like there's conversation to want to look at opening that up to cans. And we'll work with Mr. Gosted on that to bring you some more information on that. That would, of course, take two readings, but I'm going to let Mr. Wagner come up and give you a little information.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you so much. Thanks, council members. Again, we're Expedition League baseball, we're summer collegiate baseball that's coming to Grand Forks, and we're so thrilled and excited to be here, and we thank all of you for the opportunity to bring a team here. We're actually moving the team from Brandon, Manitoba, just for this season. The Wheat City Whiskey Jacks are coming down and playing here this year. We had already announced an agreement with the Grand Forks Park District a couple of months ago about a new team here. So the Whiskey Jacks will play here this season, they'll go back to Brandon, hopefully, and that team will play up there from that point forward, and then we'll have a new team here. We'll go through a name the team contest, and all the things that go with bringing a new team to a new city, so we'll have our own expansion team here starting next year. Real quick backdrop on the Expedition League. Again, we're summer collegiate baseball, so these are college baseball players looking to get drafted and play pro ball, very high level, high caliber of talent. We currently have 12 teams in the league, in the Dakotas, Nebraska, Wyoming, Montana, and Idaho, and then we have the team up in Brandon, Manitoba as well, and we're continuing our expansion. I founded the league about six or seven years ago, and our inaugural season was in 2018. So other North Dakota teams that we have right now are in Minot, we're the Service Valley Saber Dogs, and over in Dickinson, we have the Badlands Big Sticks. So again, 12 teams in total. We play 64 games in about a 75-day window, so we're emulating that minor league baseball experience, and we're all about fun. That's the, it's a great, great community asset, something that's wonderful for members of the community, and we'll, we're very appealing to folks of all ages, and anybody who wants to have fun, it's going to be a great, great time at Craft Field. And again, just very excited to be here, and I thank you guys for the opportunity, and looking forward to the start of our season. Our opening day for the league is May 25th. We start on the road over in Minot against the Saber Dogs for a three-game set, come back here, and open here on Friday, May 28th, for our home opener. So very excited to be here, and happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions from the council? No, Mr. Weigel.
Move approval.
Moved by Weigel, second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, sorry.
That's okay. If I could just clarify the motion, if it is to both approve this license at the fee that was stated in the staff report of $550, and then if you could communicate, if you'd like us to look at opening up the plastic cups to cans, we can take a look at that as well.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay, so the, I'm sorry, Mr. Weber, go ahead.
No, thank you, President Sandy. Mr. Gosted, did you have something for us on the disposable cup versus?
Yeah, I was just, they just talked to me briefly about it. The way the license sets up is that beer shall not be sold in cans or bottles, but it has to be in disposable cups or similar containers, so I think if we were going to do a change, it would simply say to remove the word cans, that it can be sold in cans but not in bottles, so you don't have any glass.
We don't need to change, I'm sorry, Mr. Weber, where you finish?
Thank you, Mr. Gosted. Do you have a president, a preference, sir?
Thank you. Yes, we do. Cans are great. We do that basically in every other city in the league, and it's just a lot cleaner, a lot easier to deal with, a lot easier from a storage standpoint. So we would prefer serving in cans, and we wouldn't look to serve in cups. We would, we certainly have a preference for cans, if we could do that, that'd be wonderful.
You would be going from cans to cups, right?
Pardon me?
If we didn't change the wording, you would be pouring from cans into cups rather than just handing out the can, correct?
Yeah, basically, I mean...
They don't have draft beer there, so by letting them take the can, we're saving on all the cups.
Exactly right.
Right.
Yes.
We...
Yep, I'm good with that.
And Mr. Gosted, we don't, changing the fee to 550 isn't an ordinance change, that's simply one of our fees in the fee schedule, so we need to change the fee schedule, correct?
Correct. Based on your decision next Monday, we'll adjust our fee schedule. The cups to cans would take two readings.
Perfect. So Mr. Weigel, two-part motion, two-part second, Mr. Weber, correct?
Correct.
Any other comments? Hearing none, yes, Ms. Mock?
So we are changing it to cans, just to clarify.
Yes, that was the motion, yes. Very good. Do you want to restate your motion, just for the sake of argument, Mr. Weigel?
Nope.
Nope, okay. I'll restate your, your moving that we move approval with the, getting the liquor license based upon city attorney's approval with the PD, also changing the fee to $550 for him, as well as in our fee schedule, and allowing them to do cans instead of plastic cups, correct?
Said it better than I could have.
Okay, and Mr. Weber, you're on, okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, good luck. May 29th, we'll all be there.
May 28th, yep, thank, thank you. And be there on the 29th, we'll be there then too, so, thanks so much.
Item 2.2, reapportment of Board of Adjustment, Mr. Tom Bean. Any comments? Moved by Weber, second by Weigel. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, request COVID relief funds for City Project 8366, Millan Overlay of Mill Road. Mr. Cranko, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. We've been notified by the North Dakota Department of Transportation that they will be sharing some of the funds that they received through Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and this amounts just under $480,000. This is eligible funding for up to 100% federal contribution, that does not require a local match. However, the big piece of this funding is that it needs to be used in its entirety, and the unused funding would be returned to the federal government afterwards. Staff ended up looking at a number of potential projects on federally eligible roads, which included the Mill Road, Millan Overlay. We also looked at rehabilitation of 24th Avenue, rehabilitation of North 36th Street, and reconstruction of University Avenue, as well as a potential new roundabout location. Overall, looking at the amount of funding available, and the costs that are typically associated with the DOT project, staff is recommending a Millan Overlay of Mill Road from Gateway Drive all the way up to Washington Street. It's a rather large chunk of road that tends to kind of get forgotten about. It's anticipated that the design and construction engineering for this project would be completed by a consultant engineer, and staff is recommending using 100% local funds for the design engineering, that way then we can move on it fairly quickly. Overall, estimate for this project is, total estimate is about $695,000, with the local share being about $215,000. And with that, staff is recommending that you authorize city staff to request COVID funds be allocated, approve any necessary budget amendments, and proceed with project development.
Any questions regarding item 2.3? Moved by Bean, second by Mock. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Weber?
Thanks for the work on this, it's tremendous good news, and in a previous meeting, we were talking about all of the work that's done behind the scenes by the engineering department. It comes to us, and we've talked about it for 12 seconds, it's good, but thanks for all the work on this, yes. I'm ready to vote.
Good job, Dan.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Again, Mr. Cranko, item 2.4, project update for City Project Number 8368, rehab of DeMose Avenue Overpass and Washington Street Pedestrian Underpass.
All right, now first, I will start this off by saying this is a different project than the Washington Street Underpass. This is the DeMose Avenue Overpass, which is kind of the, that bridge that's leading into the downtown area. The Washington Street Pedestrian Underpass that this project includes is the pedestrian underpass that's right about 24th Avenue South. Overall, this project has been included in the North Dakota Department of Transportation STIP, which is their programming document, and originally it was scheduled for 2023. And in that 2023 project, it was just the DeMose Avenue Overpass. With a recent inspection, that project is being accelerated, and it's being brought up to 2022, and it's also having its scope expanded to include some rehabilitation work on that pedestrian underpass. A lot of this is just basic rehabilitation work, we're talking some spot repairs, some work on the abutments, some of the seals, that sort of thing. Overall, estimated total project cost is about $800,000, with the local share being approximately $80,000. This is an information-only item, and so I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Bean?
Very briefly, I think we just did a survey on both of these overpasses within the last five years or so. Did you see that?
I can't recall when the last time a rehabilitation job was done on the overpass itself. I know we did a rehab job on DeMose Avenue probably about three or four years ago, I don't know if that included the overpass itself, but I think that stopped short. I think that stopped about, at the fire station there. And then the reconstruction job that occurred a few years back downtown stopped just east of the overpass.
Okay, I'm pretty sure we had some work done on the overpass as well. I can't remember which year that was, but I know there was some spot work done.
I think...
Yeah. Any other questions or thoughts? It'll be good to get the underpass prepped up, I know a lot of people use that for, pedestrians use that for crossing South Washington there. Well, thank you very much, any other comments?
I did have one other announcement, and that is that on Wednesday this week, here in council chambers, we are going to be having a public input meeting on Belmont Road from 32nd to 47th. We've been having some concerns as to speeding in that area, and so we'll be holding an open house from 4:30 to 6:30 this Wednesday, here in council chambers. Thank you.
Very good. Wednesday evening, 4:30 to 6:30 open house, Belmont Road, South, 32nd Avenue South. Okay, item 2.5, change order number one, project 8282, 2021 Millan Overlay. Mr. McGuire, good evening.
Good evening, council member Sandy, and the rest of the council here. This change order in front of you is to add some work, a two-inch Millan overlay of a portion of the Alaris Center parking lot to our existing 2021 Millan overlay project, which we awarded earlier this year in March. This change order is just short of $147,500. It's over the city engineer's authorization limit, and requires city council approval. All costs for this change order are to be paid out of the City Street and Infrastructure Fund, 4815. Staff recommended action for this is to approve the change order number one in the amount of $147,475.14, and approve any necessary budget amendment from the Street and Infrastructure Fund, 4815, for the project number 8282, 2021 Millan Overlay, and to reset the city engineer's authority to approve future change orders for this project within 10% of the original bid, plus the inclusion of this change order number one.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Any questions or comments? You want to comment about how bad the parking lot is at the Alaris?
That's why I plan on moving approval.
Very good. Move approval by Weigel, is there a second? Oh, second. Second by Bean. Mr. Bean, any other comments?
No, it's long overdue, the longer you wait, the more you are going to have to do, so certainly we get on it, get it done.
Certainly said that over and over, you're right, I agree with you, all those, or any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Mr. McGuire, appreciate it. Mr. Grasser, a comment tonight, before we move on to item 2.6?
Yes, Council President Sandy, members of the committee, thanks for indulging me, I just wanted to make a quick comment, some kudos to the engineering staff on, basically on bidding. You know, 2021's been a pretty challenging year, you've heard us talking about forest mains, and, you know, they had the ice storm down in Texas, so can you get plastic pipe, you know, and the prices are going to double, and they're going to triple, and can you even get it? And along with that, you know, the copper wire, and steel poles, and all those things, and plastic even goes into our roadway work with GeoGrid and things like that, so it's been a pretty challenging environment. And then we started hearing from contractors about being busy, and so there've been some shifting of schedules, and bids, and construction work. And, you know, I just want to acknowledge, if you look back at the bids that we've been opening here in the last, you know, we've opened quite a few of them here in the last month or so, and the guys have done a really good job of getting their estimates very, very close to the bid amount. And it's not by accident, it's with a lot of work, and the guys put in a lot of, lot of effort to do that, so I just, we've got three more bids coming up here tonight, and some of our associates will be here tonight and doing the presentation, this is part of, part of the group, but again, I just want to acknowledge both those that are here tonight, and those that aren't here tonight, you know, that they've done a really good job with getting the estimates, they've saved a lot of heartache in, as we award projects, so, especially those that are special assessed.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Grasser. We certainly owe all of you a lot of praise. Item 2.6, bid award for project 8311, District 753, reconstruction of Belmont Road. Mr. Dexter, good evening.
Good evening, Council Presidents Sandy and members of the council. Bids for this project were received on April 15th. A total of four bids were received, and four bids are opened. A low bid of $1,639,788.40 was received, or was submitted by Op Construction. The low bid was approximately 2% above the engineer's estimate, so staff would recommend awarding the contract to low bidder Op Construction in the amount of $1,639,788.40 for project 8311.
Thank you. Any questions? Moved by Bean, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.7, bid award for project 8273, 2021 Water Main Replacement. Good evening, Mr. Ryan.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. We opened bids for this project last week on April 22nd. A total of two bids were received and opened. The low bidder was Mulstead Excavating in the amount of $364,793. This bid was approximately 15% lower than the engineer's estimate. Mulstead has extensive experience with underground work, and is more than capable to complete this job. Engineering recommends award.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, any comments or questions?
Move approval.
Whoever moves approval, second by Weigel. Any other comments?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.8, bid award for project 8327, District 757, reconstruction of 27th Avenue South from Belmont Road to Chestnut. Mr. Latex here, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. We opened bids for this project on April 5th. Four bids were received and opened. The low bid was $137,418.10 by Op Construction. The bid is approximately 4.7% below the engineer's estimate, and staff recommends to approve the bid.
Great. Any questions? Mr. Weigel moves approval, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Grasser, could I ask you a quick question before we move on to 2.9? Absolutely. Thank you for having your team here tonight, and they certainly, and you all deserve a lot of praise, and I personally really appreciate all the hard work, fellas, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. At what point, Mr. Grasser, do we start to get into a lot of diminishing returns on all the construction projects that we're doing in our town? I love the fact that our engineers are getting really close on the bids, are the bids going up, though? Are we escalating because of the lack of materials, or shortages of supplies? Are we going to be better off sitting on a wad of cash and putting it in the bank and hoping it grows in value, and waiting on projects for a few years while the construction boom slows across the country? I know that, it's a fundamental question, I don't know, I've been thinking about this a lot, because we're competing against every other city, even all the small cities are getting COVID money, everybody's got money, everyone wants to do massive projects. I'm worried that the cost of these projects are going to escalate faster than the value of the dollars that we have.
Can I comment on that quick?
Yeah, please.
It's nice to see that these all went to local firms, though, right?
Certainly, it's great.
Yeah, that's great, so the money's staying here and down, yeah.
Yes, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just wondering, and probably it's a rhetorical question that doesn't need to be answered right now, if you have any thoughts.
I can give, I can give some thoughts on it, I don't have an answer necessarily to the question, because I've pondered the same, the same question. I think for this year, I think we, we were kind of lucky, I mean, we had, these projects were in the queue, you know, these, these things don't happen in a week or a month, you know, we actually start these projects, you know, six months or sometimes even more ahead of time, the very beginning phases of it. And I think what happened this year is although there's a lot of money starting to flow through the economy, it takes some momentum, it takes a while for that money to actually generate a real construction project, and I think what happened this year is we got ahead of the wave, and so, you know, our prices are still pretty good. Again, there were a lot of worries about supply of material, and this and that, and we saw individual items sometimes go up and down, but, but in general, you know, they were pretty good. I do wonder about next year, as more projects get into the development stages, we'll just have to watch it. I think we're still going to bid projects, like, like we're going to get good prices if we do see, once we start opening bids, if we do see things going a little bit crazy. You know, a lot of this really is, is a local phenomenon, you know, the aggregates and stuff come here, and, you know, sometimes there's some cement shortages and different things like that, but, you know, on the national side, sometimes it's the supply of material.
Sure, nobody's building, manufacturing PVC in Grand Forks, or around here, right?
Correct. And if you get a lot of people, you know, competing for, say, a traffic signal, that's a very specialized kind of a thing nationwide, and so those, I wish I knew the answer, but I'm just kind of sputtering here, we'll watch it, and I remain hopeful that we'll be able to get most of our, our basic infrastructure work done next year. Millen overlay type stuff is pretty, it's not a lot of moving parts on that one relative to, you know, national availability of material, you know, so...
Probably our, our sales tax for infrastructure helped us get ahead as well, because we had a little more money coming in that we had previously had, so I'm, I'm, I think we probably all share the same concerns, and I assume and trust that you will all be paying attention.
Yeah, I think the, the good thing is, you know, we actually, in my mind, anyway, we've got most of the really bad stuff, if you think back, you know, three, four, five years ago, and when, when we had all those potholes on Washington, we got, we got the really mission-critical stuff mostly completed. Again, there could be opinions, but, you know, University Avenue, to me, was kind of the last of the, the major, not major roads, but, but that type of activity, you know, the rest, we can be a little more proactive, and, and what we're looking for is supporting business investment in town, we're looking at, one of the outlooks we're looking at, you'll see in the budget, is some work out in the industrial park and stuff, obviously those roads are in poor shape, so there's plenty of places to spend money, but we'll see how the bids start to, if they do go crazy, we'll have to reevaluate.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grasser. Yes, Mr. Weber?
It's probably worth reiterating, too, what we said about the Alaris project, there's a cost for not doing these jobs as well, right?
Certainly, certainly.
Council President Sandy, if I could use the words of Blake Bexton, your street supervisor, he said, this spring, you know what, Todd? You could hardly find potholes.
That's awesome.
And so, that's well done after the last three years of all the work that we've done post that sales tax, so I think on behalf of the community, we should be proud, because, you know, three, four years ago, there were plenty to find out there.
It was all people we're talking about, all potholes, all the time. Okay. Great, thank you. Where were you? Item 2.9, Mr. Phelan, Department Head Classifications.
Council President Sandy and members of the committee, we'll have to get into a policymaking discussion, so we talked about that down at the subcommittee of the committee of the whole downstairs, so this truly is a policymaking role between the city administration and the city council, so we have a recommendation, and, and we look forward to a good debate. Also, I have HR Director Tangi, you're not Tangi, Tangi Bovati is here too, so I think at the end, I'm going to just give a quick overview of what the ordinance says, and why we're doing what we're doing, can I give you a bit of a history over the last 20-plus years, and then Tangi said she'd be here for pros and cons, if you want to hear that. And obviously, we're doing this on behalf of our mayor, Pachensky. Number one, if I, we go through the ordinance, and thanks, Dan, for you and Ella and your office for putting this ordinance together, we were here about a week or so ago, and said, got some feedback, and then we're going to come back with an ordinance, and here we are. So if you look at the ordinance itself, it's, which is attached as one of three, section one, one of the concerns is that what happens if there, we need to provide some sunshine and some sort of appeal to whatever may happen with a non-classified department head. And so as part of this, similar to what we've done previously, regarding a classified, a non-classified employee that is released from duty, there is an opportunity for that individual to come before the city council, and so that's, that's what section one is about, just to have there some sort of appeal process, we have, it has to see the light of day, and it can receive a review of the city council. Section two, and section three, one of the concerns that we had in there is that trying to keep up with the city code, and we were talking about, the city departments aren't quite aligned, and the city department heads aren't aligned with whether it's the position or whatever, so what we're asking for in section two is that we just define what a department is in the city of Grand Forks and keep it general, and then under section two, in a similar way, we, let's just keep department heads as general, and not name every specific department head, but just name them in title. Section four, if you look at section four, we've lined out Community Government Relations Officer, that's a position we no longer have and intend to move forward with, and then finally, the letter I is, what we're proposing as part of this is that department heads would be filled as non-classified positions, moving forward, that's, that's the recommendation of the, of the city administration. However, if you're already in a classified position, you would stay there, and there'd be a, an attrition process, as a position would come open, the process would be to provide them as non-classified employees. And so I know we had discussion a week or so ago regarding classified department heads versus non-classified, we're proposing here to be non-classified, or be contracted, non-subject service employees. I also attached later today, I was just going through the history myself, and attached, you know, one of the, the first contracted position the city had from a department head perspective was your police chief, and that was John Packard, so he was the first on department head that was under contract in the late 90s, and then succeeding him was our fire chief, O'Neil, and they were the first two. And then I want to talk about, really, there was a sea change, we... We did receive a, voted in a new mayor in 2000 along with a brand-new city council, and things changed in 2000. And so we moved forward. We continued with contracts throughout the 2000s, through, under Mayor Brown, and that city council was really firm that we were going to have contracted department heads, both administratively and in the legislative branch. Along the way, we also moved forward with a more of a city administrator form of government, too. And so before that, we had a series of department heads that we still do now, but they installed a city minister, it was called administrative coordinator. It's migrated to what we call now a city administrator. And so you can see throughout the 2000s, department heads, to include myself as the public works director, we were contracted department heads. The sea changed in 2011 moving forward, and you can see a series of department heads that went from contracted back to civil service. And I will point out if, as part of this classified, 2011 to present, all of those positions that were filled were all internal civil service candidates, except for our fire chief, Lorenz, that was filled. So all those positions were filled by internal candidates that went from civil service, a lot of times assistant department head into a department head position throughout that. So I think, number one, we should be very proud in the 2011s forward that we had a lot of talented and great people that moved into positions, and we didn't skip a beat. In fact, we moved ahead in a better, in a better phase. So certainly, I would anticipate all this, these new department heads, I want to say in 2021 to 2030, we're going to see a similar sea change of department heads. And so that's why we're in front of you today is that now as we want to get ahead of this, we already have two department head positions we need to fill. Number one is a city planner. That's currently, when Mr. Gangler left the position, was a, as a nonclassified contracted position. We're asking that that position with this ordinance would stay as nonclassified. The public works operations director was a classified position, and Lee Ray moved from classified service into a classified department heads system. So what we feel like is part of it is, there's been a lot of discussion in the early 2000s, they created a city administrator type position to be that buffer, not only with the city council, but with the mayor and the city administration. It would be the focal point of administration, okay? And so now there's been a lot of talk about political pressure, right? So really, the city administrator was put in place to bear the burden, if there is a burden, of political pressure in a single point. And department heads would do their things, even though they'd move forward with, you know, contracted department heads. I think the city minister is supposed to absorb the political pressures. Department heads are supposed to lead their, do their jobs, lead their folks, do what they need to do in the most appropriate way possible, knowing that you have a city administrator that has, going to have to be the fulcrum between council and the mayor and the department heads. And so that's really the structure we set out to do. I think the other thing in speaking with Mayor Pachensky is that these positions are really important strategic positions as department heads, and are compensated accordingly, and they should be more in a nonclassified contracted position. And as we discussed, any deputy on through the organization are all classified civil service positions, and that's appropriate. So it's just the top layer of the organization as we move forward. And I think really, we really have a, truly a, quite a good city council that really engages city departments really well. And so that's really something we should never take for granted. And we have a city administration that really works well together. So those are all the reasons regarding, let's move forward with nonclassified department heads. They are of a level of a certain, that they should be contracted, they should be benefited over time. And I just wanted to share the history is from Mayor Owens in the late 90s, all the way up to Mayor Pachensky in the early 2000s. We have gone back and forth in this vein, and it's, for the most part, we've had terrific department heads. And, you know, we probably have one out of 10. Sometimes we have challenges, but we should be really thankful for the nine out of 10 where things really work well. So with that, I just put a period on there. I'd ask Tangi if she had anything further to augment what I just stated.
Ms. Bovette, good evening.
Good evening, Committee Chair Dana, or Sandy, and members of the committee. I'll try and be brief here, but a couple of things I'd like to point out prior to getting into the pros and cons of the classified versus nonclassified positions is firstly, recruiting for this level of position can be difficult regardless of the designation of classified or nonclassified, and in this case, contract. The process for hire either way will be much the same as far as posting the position and advertising the position, as well as the selection process will be very similar regardless of the designation. And then secondly, all positions in the city, regardless of classified versus nonclassified status, are protected against federal, under federal laws against employment-based discrimination, and have federal rights under the Family Medical Leave Act, Fair Labor Standard Acts, and other federal acts, and are all covered under state unemployment benefits. So just to put things into perspective, some of the benefits of a nonclassified contract position would be the flexibility in terms of hiring. Change is easier. You're not locked into an unlimited timeframe for an employee. You're able to offer extended benefits. Some things that we do for contract department heads would be to offer vacation accruals upfront in a lump sum, where we don't do that for classified employees. We have the ability to write a contract to include a signing bonus or a moving allowance that we are not able to do with civil service employees. We're also able to offer other, an extended health insurance benefit, and extended pension contributions. Part of contract employment, it can be a quicker process. We're not, it doesn't need to be approved through the Civil Service Commission, and it does not have a mandatory posting time. Some cons of contract position would be that we may attract a smaller applicant pool, and we may discourage some internal applicants. We may have to pay more because of the lack of position security, and higher turnover is possible with a contract position, as well as a lack of continuity. Benefits of a civil service position would be to provide that continuity, to provide the incumbent security. It may yield a greater applicant pool. It may attract more outside applicants. So there is some level of insulation from political pressures, and classified positions do also allow for removal from, or for cause. One of, some of the cons of civil service employment would be it is difficult to remove positions because it is difficult to establish cause. If a criminal conviction happens, or a violation of a drug and alcohol policy happens, those are easy things. Those are easy to determine cause. But incompetency and ineffectiveness is much harder to prove. And please note that if we do have to go through a process like that, that has to be held in a public forum. All of that information is public. So in addition, civil service can overturn mayor's, the mayor's action had he, if he decides to terminate a classified employee. So it's difficult to maintain accountability in some of those positions. And once in a position, employees may settle for doing the minimum, and that's very hard to control as well. Political leaders are very limited in their ability to choose good part, or their own good partners with classified employment. Any questions?
Any, off the top of anyone's head, any comments or questions? Is that the finality of the presentations on that issue?
If I let our mayor ink, or if he had any final thoughts on-
Certainly, Mayor. Before we-
Does Council want to go first, or they only hear from me? I don't want to repeat everything, but, all right, I'll go. I think, you know, beyond just the benefits of cleaning up the code and having the, you know, extra negotiating ability to get the best people when you are hiring, I think, you know, we have to look at, this is maybe 12 to 15 positions within the whole city. These are our highest paid, our top leaders. They're making $110,000 to $150,000. These need to be very accountable positions. And that's what I ran on when I campaigned, is that we're going to have accountability and transparency. This is just another part of that. And I think that transparency is shown by the fact that we're coming to you. In past administrations, they've just done things. They didn't, they just did it, and you'd see the contract, and it would get moved through here. We're coming, getting out in front of this, letting everybody know what's happening. If there is a staffing decision that has to be made, whether it's a contract, whether it's coming in front of hiring or termination, it still comes in front of council for their decision. Everything's going to see the light of day. There has to be a reason given if there does have to be a separation. And council can overturn that by a majority vote. Basically, we all have to be aligned to make a move, which I think is good. And if our eight elected leaders can't, you know, come together and make that decision, then we've got issues in our own accountability, let's just say. I'm in full agreement of keeping, you know, civil service from there on down. We talked about, you know, at a deputy level, maybe adding that in there, but I think it's a good compromise just to have the very top, the department heads, the, you know, the leaders of our bureaucracy. And largely, I think, you know, it's a goal of my administration. I would, you know, love to continue to build trust with the council. And, you know, if anything happens, we can always make changes later. But I think this is the direction that, like I said, I run on, I'm very comfortable with. And I think, you know, I think we've really begun to build trust, and it's just another layer of building that trust and continuing. Administration's got a tough job, and this allows us to be the best at what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any, any comments or thoughts for the good of the order? Okay, I'll go first. I'll be short but sweet. I've been very, I think, very consistent on my thoughts related to contract versus classified. I'm a firm believer in contract employees. I believe our top managers should be contract employees for many of the reasons that have already been voiced today. I also have, for years, had concerns about the civil service concept because I believe, not that I have a problem with the civil service concept, what I have a problem with is humans, and humans are, by their nature, fallible, and it's very hard. I do, I think most managers who oversee people fail in their duties when it comes to evaluating their employees because we want to be good to, I think naturally you want to be good to people. I do. And I think many times you have employees that work for you, and you want to be good for them, and it's very hard to give them a poor evaluation. And so for that reason, along with other reasons, I think the civil service concept is flawed. But there you go. That's just my opinion. I, knowing that we do salary surveys and pay people accordingly based upon how their peers get paid around our community and around the state, we're not paying less for classified employees. We're paying the same for classified employees and giving them the civil service protections. I'm willing to continue to go along with that for all of our other employees. I do believe that our management should be on contract. But that's just my opinion, and I know there are others that disagree, and that's okay. Mr. Weber, something to add to the-
I'm glad you, thank you, President Sandy. I'm glad that you're willing to tolerate us disagreeing with you. That's very generous of you. First of all, both of, Mayor and President Sandy, you've both mentioned this need for greater accountability. It was part of your campaign. It's part of your worldview of humanity. Yes. I don't see that that's been a problem in my time involved, the city government here, that we've had a lack of accountability. And it's also my understanding that civil service allows for accountability. It doesn't preclude accountability, although you did say it's a little more difficult to prove that issue. And frankly, in my years as a small business owner, sometimes I had employees where they needed to go, and I couldn't always prove why they needed to go, and they just had to go. And that was the tough call. So in that case, I was glad I didn't have civil service getting in the way. But I also made mistakes sometimes and let people go when I possibly shouldn't have. The current proposal allows the mayor, it seems to me, and maybe I'm getting this wrong, some arbitrary authority on defining who's going to be a department head. That's left a little bit open, or am I reading that one wrong? It's not just limited to the current department heads, right? The mayor would have the authority to-
No, I think it would be to the prescribed departments. I think we're just trying to define what a department is, and then therein what a department head would be. So we have an org chart, and so the departments are per what we have as part of the city organization, you know, from assessing all the way through police. Those are departments, and as opposed to naming every one of them, we're just trying to define what a department is, and then therein what a department head would be.
Mr. Weber, could I-
Please.
Just give you an example. For example, right now, we have a building inspections director.
Right.
Okay. In the future, we're possibly going to make the change where it's a building safety director. So under this, he would just be a department head. We won't need to go back and change code. We've got a public works director. Before, it was our public works operations. The titles aren't really there. This just allows the department heads to have whichever title they want, but they still need to be those, only leading their departments. That's, that's how it's narrowed down. There's not any freedom really to say someone's a department head or not. It's just the current department heads, but it's left more vague, so if the titles change, then we can do that more easily.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Historically, building inspections was kind of, it was never quite clear whether that was under engineering or whether that was separate. And your administration has determined that that's a department rather than part of engineering.
City council determined that. We recommended it.
Back at me. All right. Very good. So I'm trying to weigh all this. So for me, this is not about current department heads, or the current mayor, or current council. It's about the policy decision long term, which I'm hearing, a contract offers flexibility in terms of incentives and benefits and length of employment. These are three of the reasons why we want to do this. But then you also said, and this, there's a tension here, that a contract can make recruitment and retention more difficult. Could you, could you speak to that tension? And maybe I misunderstood that.
Yes, Councilman Weber. And actually, these are, some of these are just hypothetical examples. We don't know for certain. We've never posted a position, both classified and then contract, and saw a difference in the application. In theory, people would be more reticent to move to a contract position if they're already in a classified position.
So this is mainly a concern in terms of internal promotions?
Right.
Which has worked out very well for us over the years.
Yes.
Fantastically well.
Historically.
Surprisingly well in some cases. Not that surprising. And you're not the only one I'm thinking of, John. So with all of that wishy-washy discussion aside, I'm still kind of in the same place that I was, concerned about an extreme mayor or an extreme council because part of what you've proposed actually gives the council much more authority in this than we previously had, I believe. Is that right?
It clarifies that a department head that would be removed by the opinion of the mayor could be restored to their position under two, really, two certain set of circumstances. One, if the mayor doesn't provide the report, the person is automatically restored. So if they stub their toe by not providing that, or by council vote.
Good, good. Except in the case of an extreme partisan mayor and council, either way, then-
In that case, no one's going to want to work for us anyway.
I think we've got bigger problems at that point.
We do, but they come and go. Elected officials come and go. We have a finance director who's been winning awards for a long, long time. And I wouldn't want that kind of technical expertise that we've so benefited from and come to lean on to be undermined by partisanship. Partisanship that can shift. Every two years, we can have that kind of shift. So that's where I'm still at on this. where I'm still at on this.
So, side question. Does the city council, I don't recall, do we approve the org chart?
I think the city council, Council President Sandy, you approved the org chart through two documents. Number one, the budget, the annual budget, and then the salary benefit plan that defines the departments and all that. So, you're approving that as part of that annual process. And that's why we did bring back the building inspections director position, because it was not a noted department nor a department head, and was not in the budget. And so, that's why we brought that back as part of approval. Sometimes we ask for those approvals for departments and positions in the budget process and then move forward from there.
Any other, Mr. Veen?
Yes, sir.
A couple of questions. And the first one, I guess maybe goes to Mayor. You said you ran on greater accountability. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Well, I think President Sandy kind of hit on that, too. When you're at these high levels, you need to be driven to be the best that you can possibly be at your job and not just do the bare minimum to get by and make sure that you're covered by civil service. I think when you're at one of those levels where you're at a department head level, you need full accountability, just like you would in a private sector job, because you're paid for your talent and your skill, and we can't have the bare minimum get by. That's not enough, and that's, to me, where that accountability factor comes into play.
You know, I agree with what you're saying, with wanting people to be working at the highest level. Wouldn't challenge that at all. But I think we've got a great bunch of department heads right now that are working at a high level. And I would think that being contract or not, I don't tell, I can't say that any of them are not, are slacking off. I mean, I have the highest respect for them, and so I think we have great accountability, exactly like you said, with who we have. And I, so, that's kind of my first comment because there's pros and cons, as was stated, for both, all of this. But I do think, and I do want to say to all department heads, I appreciate the work that they do and how hard they do, because I've seen, I have seen more civil service people do an extraordinary good job and be classified versus nonclassified. And so, I think, especially when you're only talking about department heads, if you're talking about across the whole city, that may be a different story. Again, I just, I think we have a great caliber of department heads that has been able to be continued using being classified employees. And I do have to disagree a little bit with you, Mr. Sandy.
I can't, how dare you.
On the evaluating of employees, because the person that will do the evaluating of the department heads is the mayor or Todd. And I think they will tell them what's right or wrong regardless whether they're classified or nonclassified. I know them well, and they do a great job, and they'll be honest, and they will help motivate department heads like they normally do.
Right.
But people come and go, as Mr. Weber said. They can. But, you know, I got to admit, we've been pretty good at maintaining good department heads. And the last thing I wanted to say is probably because I have seen and experienced the piece that's really hard, and that's the politics that gets played. And how do you, around all of the politics, make sure that we, as department heads, as city council members, are getting good information from department heads that isn't influenced by politics? And I've seen the politics come from the mayor. I'm not saying this one. I've seen the politics come from the city council, and I've seen the politics come from city administration in the past. So, and that's firsthand experiences that I've been around. So, when I look at all of those things, it's kind of like, how do you weigh the difference here? Because there are certainly advantages like you have laid out. And when I try to do it, I try to weigh out which one is really, which way does the scale tip, let's put it that way. And I still look at what the value we get with our current department heads and the work that they do, as I've seen very universally all over. And we do know that a bad employee can be let go. You have to have cause, and you have to have process, and you have to have documentation to be able to do that. But it certainly can be done in the case, you know, it should be done. So, that's part of the, now, that's where I'm personally balancing these things here, because, and the biggest issue for me becomes the politics, because the rest of that you can kind of figure out and deal with. The politics comes and go, and it can be brutal. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, President Sandy. First of all, I would agree. I think we do have excellent department heads. That's why we are going to keep, you know, everything under the classifications that they currently are, so this would be for future hiring, so at least the people know what they're hiring and signing on to. Second of all, you know, I think you've, you know, you've made a lot of the political pressures and, you know, the concerns over that, but I think it comes down to, if you have so much political pressure, if you're so worried about that, you end up having bureaucracy around the city and not the elected leadership. And I think that's probably where we maybe differ, because certainly you can have continuity, but it needs to come from elected leadership. That's who the city and the people have elected, myself and the seven of you. If we're not accountable to making these hiring and firing decisions, then you're letting the bureaucracy run the city and not the elected leaders. And that's, in my belief, the very core of government and the very core of running a city. So, that's, I guess that's the problem I have with the last part. And the political pressure, I mean, things are going to come to the light of day. It's not, you know, the 60s, 70s, and 80s where things were done behind the scenes. Everything comes out. So, you're still on the federal protections under any of these jobs. So, you know, I just would really struggle with allowing a city to completely be run by the bureaucracy. It's just, it's against everything that I personally believe.
Cigars and Scotch, right?
The good old days.
That used to be how it was done. Yes, Mr. Weber, comments?
Relations and respect, and I've got respect written here in caps. Relations and respect between the mayor and council continue to improve. And so, I'm looking for ways to agree, in no small part, because that's been so well demonstrated by you over the last while now. I really appreciate the outreach, the collaborative nature of your office. For me, the bottom line comes down to whether your worldview is to expect the worst of people or to expect the best of people. And this is, this is an oversimplification, but in a business management class, you're going to spend some time talking about theory X and theory Y of management. Theory X is the idea that people are basically lazy, and they're going to get away with whatever they can get away with, and your job as the boss is to make damn sure they're doing their job. Whereas, theory Y is the belief that, and again, this is an oversimplification. These are two extremes. Theory X, people are lazy. You have to be minding them all the time. Theory Y, people want to do a good job. People want to be valued members of the team. They just need the opportunity, the processes in place to do that. So, for me, this still comes down to this bottom line. I appreciate the work, Mr. Gauss, out of trying to parse out all that we've been asking here. But it comes down to me, do we want more of a system that prioritizes accountability or that prioritizes the security and nurturing work environment? And I'm inclined to be more of a theory Y manager. So, thanks.
Mr. Weigel, any thoughts to add for the good of the order?
I think you summed up what I had to say a little bit, Mr. Sandy, so that's where I'll leave it.
Sounds good. Ms. Doppler, do you have any thoughts tonight?
I don't have anything new to add to this discussion, though.
Thank you. Ms. Mock?
I don't think I have much to add. I, I don't know. We kind of went through this when we talked about the new building inspector position, and so I think a lot of this got discussed at that point. I honestly don't really think of it as a personal thing at all. I just think some of us are pretty strong one way, and some of the rest are pretty strong the other way. And I've had really good experiences with our department heads. You know, if I've ever disagreed or not liked an answer, I think it's coming from the best of places and the most professional judgment, and I just always want to get that from those top leaders and our department heads.
Okay. So, here we are.
President Sandy, can I just say one thing to close, just to Brett Weber's point? In whichever way the vote goes, certainly this is administration's wishes, but either way, the continued collaboration is great, and that's what this is all about. And lastly, I'll just point out that on the building inspections director, it's been a great success, as we've seen. Even had a conversation with him this morning, you know, how did you feel? Would there have been any change in you wanting the job if it was classified versus contracted? And Mr. Baseflu just said, you know, he was hungry for this. This was his dream job. He really, it didn't matter because he knew that he was going to be good at it and could get the best out of it. So, it didn't matter. I think that's a great example of, you know, getting someone under this situation, and it's been a great success, and it's, you know, right in our backyard. And we saw that as recently as what we had to deal with over the last couple of weeks. I'll leave that comment at that, but I think we're all aware of that. So, I'll leave it at that, but thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Mr., how do you say, Bozflu?
Baseflu.
Baseflu, thank you. Baseflu, he came from private sector, correct?
Yeah. I mean, he had worked as a fire marshal. He was at A2S, and yeah, but, yeah, from private sector, absolutely.
Mr. Weigel, a comment?
I'm going to move approval of staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Well, I'll second it for the sake of the argument. Okay. Any other comments? Should we do a roll call vote? Why don't we do a roll call vote?
All right. Weigel?
Aye.
Doppler?
No.
Weber?
No.
Mock?
No.
Veen?
No.
And is Kyle on?
He's not.
All right. And Sandy?
Yes.
All right. Fails.
Motion fails. Motion fails, 42. So, we'll stay the course. Nothing changes, and it'll, I assume we'll have this at council as well next week.
Council President Sandy, just so we, because we had this confusion last night. Mr. Gauss said the recommendation is to not approve the current ordinance that's in place, right? And so, I assume this goes to city council. Well, I assume the city council wants the opposite of that. You would state the city department heads are classified, and then we would have to come here if we're not. So, maybe I could just ask some advice, because we've got to fill a couple of positions here, just some advice on how we move forward coming up to Monday.
Yeah. The way I understand this committee is that you're making recommendations to the city council. So, this will come up as the first reading of the ordinance on next Monday, a week from today. If the ordinance doesn't pass, then however the ordinance reads, it will read. And I don't think that, there may be some confusion as to who's, because of the names of some of the department heads don't match, don't align. And so, we might have to have a discussion about that on Monday as to how to, we might have to do an amendment if this doesn't pass to clarify it a little better.
Yeah. I personally didn't have a problem with the definition of departments and department heads in the change in this version of the ordinance. I don't, but that's neither here nor there for this moment. We can discuss that next Monday.
So, would you be bringing forward a different staff report next Monday?
I think it would be the same staff report, because we've already, that's the recommendation.
Right. We've made our recommendation.
It's to deny the staff report.
We've not requested any specific changes. We just had a vote up or down whether to recommend or not recommend.
Correct. But the result of the vote on Monday might precipitate a change to clarify those that are being hired, because there is some positions that are listed that either the name, the title doesn't exist. Those might be more cleanup language.
Is that clear, Mr. Weber? Clear as mud? Great. Okay. Moving right along, unless anything else for the good of, okay, very good. Thank you for that good discussion. Item 210, intergovernmental supportment agreement to provide refuse from recycling services in a community partnership with the Grand Forks Air Force Base. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, members of the committee as a whole, this evening I have a broad outline. We've continued down trying to find community partnerships with our Grand Forks Air Force Base where they make sense. And so, where Grand Forks Air Force Base would like us to continue on, and what they want to do is integrate themselves in with our current recycling agreement, and then whatever recycling agreement may come in the future is essentially what they'd rather do. They want to be part of the city of Grand Forks as a recycling agreement. There's another small part of it is they have some commercial solid waste containers that they would like to integrate with the city of Grand Forks, too. Their housing is private, and therefore, a lot of that is privatized, but it's just some solid waste activities and some recycling activities they'd like to integrate in the city. Why do they want to do it? It looks good to the United States Air Force when the base is working with the local community. It looks good when they're saving some money on behalf of it. And so, the United States Air Force and the whole Pentagon, they promote community partnerships with the local community. So, this is one where they thought we could get it done. Similarly, we provide them water. We provide public safety types of things. So, here's one more opportunity where we could partner with them. So, with that, they are, you can about imagine with the federal government, they do have to go through some additional steps, and they're doing some final details. They said they thought we would have a kind of a final agreement on services by Thursday, and then I would like to place that on the agenda for Monday for your final review before you approve that. They do know that we're gonna, I'm also going to give you an update. We're gonna, we're working on a new RFP for services, because our current agreement ends at the end of this year. And so, we're going to give you an update where we're at on Monday moving forward, because it's budget season and some of the things we're looking at. So, we'll give you an update. And I just want to join the city of Grand Forks as part of this service. So, with that, I stand for any questions, Mr. Sandy.
Any questions for Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
President Sandy, so I'd be fully supportive of moving forward with the IGSA, but the last point you brought up was what I was going to ask about. We don't want to make an agreement that eclipses or goes beyond our current contract. How do we deal with that?
I think, I think the pressing point is their agreement ends here on June 30th, and so they need a new agreement. So, I think what we want to do is...
The base needs a new agreement right away.
They need a new, and so they're kind of figuring out. I think, I think we add them to the end of this year and then have some language about whatever the city approves as part of, you know, final approval, that they would continue on there. They want to make sure they don't get left at the altar after six months. We're going to look at different services. I think whatever we come up, we'll integrate the Grand Forks Air Force Base. Whatever makes sense for us to recycle locally will make sense for the Grand Forks Air Force Base. So, they trust in what we do in the years, in the future.
Yeah. One would think we would get economies of scale for both of us, in theory, right? So...
Depending on how we decide to move forward.
Sure.
All right.
But individually, neither of us are going to be able to get a better deal without the other one, I'm guessing. So, okay. Any, yeah, as long as we don't tie our hands to 2022 when we don't know what we're doing. So, yes, Mr. Weigel moves...
Move approval.
Moves approval, yep. Second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Awesome. Item 211, project 8235, Riverbank stabilization project. Ms. Parby, good evening. Thanks for waiting.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. Tonight, we're bringing before you a solution to a problem that we've had in the downtown area, just to the north of the Sorley Bridge, Dimmer's Avenue. There has been a floating dock that's been in place over the last couple of years. That was part of a riverbank improvement project. It's been used by fishermen, people just viewing the river, anybody wanting to get out in canoe and kayak. The challenge with that is that we struggled to get it in and out of the river. We have contracted that service with HB Son and Light, but the riverbank is really silty there. I know. They're jack of all trades. The riverbank is really silty there, and it really presents some challenges with us getting the dock in and out. There are riprap rock in front of it. We would, we've been working with KLG, who actually helped us with the initial project, and they have suggested to put down a concrete, I can't remember what it's called. It's a concrete pad, and basically, that helps to get stabilization so that you can get in and out, and then we can push silt off of that a bit, too. So, Kim has been working with them over the last probably year, trying to find the solution and come up with an idea for a project. in and out for the community to use. So tonight, we'd ask you to award the lowest bid to Tony Anderson Construction and approve the budget amendment.
Seeing skepticism on my face. Doesn't, doesn't, don't we get a lot of movement there with the river going up and down and the ice going up and down? Are we putting massive footings in? How thick is this concrete? How does it stay in place and not bust to pieces?
Yeah. I don't know that there's footings below it, these concrete panels, I'm sorry. They, we've used them in other areas along the floodplain, mostly near stormwater detention areas. And they are pretty solid. They've been pretty effective even in the Fargo area. So they, they can get silt on them and sink a bit, but they do provide a stable
Base?
Base for us to be able to utilize. There are footings that, that are in the riverbank that hold the dock in place, as you mentioned. It floats up and down, so there is some movement there. But just trying to get in and out of that spot is just quite challenging, just with the silt.
Yeah. So, but it's going to get covered in silt again.
It, it will.
How are we going to clean that? Do we just use a plow?
A little, or, yeah, some sort of bobcat, we can push the silt
Okay.
off of it more than we can do now with, with just the soils that are there.
It's a safety issue, in my opinion. I mean, it makes sense. If it works, I sure hope it works for $90,000. Yeah. Mr. Weigle moves approval. Ms. Mock, did you?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Yeah.
I can second.
Second, great.
I'll second. So it's an erosion control mat, essentially?
Yes.
Like, so it's meant to?
It's rebarred together with the concrete pieces, but I'm not sure that there's footings below it.
For a little bit of movement involved. And then, so like to Mr. Sandy's point, you might have to go out, I would assume, after a couple of years if there was a lot of silt on top of it to get back. But it should provide you a little bit more stable basis for getting in and out and putting that in. Is that the idea?
Yeah, it provides that solid base that we don't have currently.
And did, I mean, you said that Greenway was involved. Do we have to worry about floodway impacts with it being right on the bank?
It will get flooded.
Or is it considered, I mean, it is considered
It's stabilizing them.
So I guess I don't know if that counts. Or do they have to worry about the floodway impacts with erosion control products?
I don't believe so. I guess I'm not sure I understand your question, but it wouldn't be impacting any of the flow, because it would just be part of the riverbank stabilization.
Okay.
The dangerous part is putting the dock in and out.
The challenging, yeah.
Right, challenging.
Yeah.
Dangerous. HB Sound, they've done a fantastic job putting that together for us each year, not without challenges sometimes, yeah?
Yeah. And I can't recall, I'm sorry, Kim's out of the office today, but she has worked with, I think, Tony Anderson as well. And there might have been another contractor where she got estimates, but HB has been kind of the most creative in how they've been able to install that for us and, and take it out in the fall.
This was originally put in with state money, though, right?
We did have outdoor heritage funds. I don't believe, I can't recall when we purchased the dock, if we used that type of funding, but most of the other improvements in that area were from the outdoor heritage funds.
The Greenway has been a fantastic addition to the city, so popular. And that's, that spot is one of the few accessories that we've added over the last 20-plus years, and it's been very popular. So I'm, I had the same, some of the same concerns as you, President Sandy, but I'm fully supportive of moving forward with whatever the best recommendation is. I'm ready to vote.
I assume the engineers know better than we do.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And Ms. Parby, last but not least, parts for MBF wastewater treatment plant. MBF.
And this is pretty simple. We have six MBFs. We actually did some work last year. We've got additional flow out at the wastewater treatment plant with Red River Bio Refinery. This is in the budget. We just can't purchase the parts without a sole source, purchase approval from council.
Great. Any comments? Moved by Mock, seconded by Weigle. Hearing no other comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 3, informational items. Item 3.1, legislative update. Mr. Bernstrom, good evening.
Councilman Sandy, members of city council, just a quick update here with the state legislature. They're, what we thought last week, they're maybe in their last week. This week, we think they're in their last week. They've, they've had some work done on a couple of bills that have slowed things down for them. So I'm going to speak on a couple of them. The, our pension, defined benefit through North Dakota PERS system that we use here with the City of Grand Forks, that bill got hog housed in the House Government and Veterans Affairs Committee two weeks ago, which caused a ripple effect, a little bit of what to do with this bill. So right, right now, this bill is in conference committee. And really what they're planning, as it's written, we'll see what comes out of conference committee, is they want to separate all state employees from all political sub-employees. They want to put a bunch of money into the state employees' defined benefit fund and then close it on January 1 of 2023. Political subs can keep theirs open, and they'll do a study in 2021 that will be done in November, that they can then readdress in November of 2021 to see what they want to do with political subs, whether that's, not so much what they want to do. Let political subs then have a decision of here's how much money is going to take to keep, get this thing going in the right direction. We have some, some issues with some of the language within their study plan, because it doesn't necessarily have to be fully funded in a month, right? It just needs to be pointed in the right direction when it comes to a pension plan. So all that got, everything that I just said is new to that bill as of 10 days ago. So that is in conference committee right now. That bill is moving forward in conference committee with House Bill 1380, which is, they're calling it the Streams Bill, which is, help me out, that's probably the latest version of the Prairie Dog Bill, if you will. As, as you get your, your, your funding and your money coming into the state and what buckets get filled where, the reason they're connected is the amount of money they want to put into the state defined benefit PERS plan would potentially come from this bill. So those two bills are going through conference committee at the same time, and they're, they're determining where that money will go. So that, those two bills we're following right now, those are really the last two bills from a city standpoint that, and they have large impacts, don't get me wrong. They have very large impacts to, to all employees, really, at the state and at the political sub level. So we're following those two. And then as we, as the session is wrapping up, you've probably seen things in the newspaper of the governor signing bills and stuff and various bills. In one, one bill that he did sign, we want to give a special recognition to, and we have Chief Nelson up here to speak on that one, that is specifically House Bill 1435.
Chief, thank you, Mr. Bernstrom.
President Sandy, members of the committee, the whole, thank you. I just wanted to publicly take a moment to recognize especially Representative Zach Ista, who is the one that authored his first bill, actually as a junior representative, his first bill that he authored and actually got approved, being House Bill 1435. House Bill 1435 allows for insurance coverage for surviving spouses and children of a law enforcement officer, a firefighter, a corrections officer, or any emergency medical person that's employed by a political subdivision as a, as a professional until the surviving spouse is 65 years of age and the, and the child is 26. One of the things that we worked with, kind of diligent in lockstep with Mr. Ista, is when he first called me on this, my concern was, what, what did the funding look like? I didn't want to encumber the city saying, I think this is a great idea, but next thing you know, you know, the political sub would be paying. And we went back to the drawing board and were able to actually pull in the appropriations as it'll be rolled into the PERS plan at no cost to the political subdivisions. So this is a bill that we all hope we never have to use, but if we do, it provides a level of comfort. I will tell you, last Monday, I was there for the signing down in Bismarck. I phoned the governor, and the legislature did a very nice job of honoring Cody. I actually had a chance to speak as well. It's impromptu speaking 101. When you find out 10 minutes before you're speaking, they say, we forgot to send you that email, but by the way, you'll be following. But we did fine. But I just think for firefighters and correctional officers and police officers, once again, something we hope we never have to use, but if we had to, I think it was a very awesome thing. And one of, one of the nice things that also may not be realized right on, on top, is that this actually went retroactive back to 2010, which was going to pull in Bismarck, Gloucester, Rolle County, Fargo, ourselves. That's four families right now that have at least some burden that's been lifted. It's never going to replace our loved one, but at least it'll give them some solace. So what I wanted to do is just go publicly on record is to thank the governor, especially Representative Ista, and our local legislators that, that supported us. And, and thank you, because this is just an extension of, we know the support that we get from the mayor and the council, and it was kind of nice to see with all the different rhetoric going on nowadays, the support that we're getting from the state. So I want to personally thank everyone here and our state government. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Were there comments or questions for Mr. Bernstrom or Mr. Weber?
Just very quickly, in addition to Representative Ista, who was the main sponsor of this bill, we have cosponsors, Representative Mary Adams. This isn't the whole list, but these are our local folks, and it's most of the list. Representative Mary Adams, Representative Cory Mock, Representative Emily O'Brien, and Representative Steve Vetter. And then also Senators Baki, Cruin, and Meyer. Thanks for their cosponsorship of House Bill, the Cody Holt bill, 1435. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Bernstrom?
Yes.
If the state of North Dakota for state employees is planning on closing their defined benefit plan, what benefit plan are they planning to go to?
They would, their plan is to go to a defined contribution plan, not a defined benefit plan. And so right now, NDR is, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Thor said that there's a defined benefit and defined contribution. They would just get out of the defined benefit portion of it.
Do they currently have a defined contribution plan?
They do.
They do. City of Grand Forks doesn't have a defined contribution plan. We only have defined benefit, correct? Or we have both?
We have had a defined contribution plan in between our two defined benefit plans. I do not believe anybody is remaining on our defined contribution plan.
Contribution plan.
Nobody, nobody remains on that plan.
Mr. Sandy, it's just for the regular employees. I'll call it regular. It's not for like highway patrol and we'll call it public safety. They would stay on their defined benefits. So it would be more for the rank and file state employees, is what they're looking at. I think the other part, maybe they wouldn't close the political subdivisions, obviously, we were in there with many other cities and counties. And I think one of the comments I heard is that if you just include the political subs, it's more fully funded than with all the state employees. So there's, there's more of a drag on the system with the state employees than local subs. But we just, I think as part of the study, too, is that we'd have to come up in the interim with a study of how we're going to kind of more fully fund the plan over the next 30 years, too. So if they do separate us out, and they are going to require us to do some due diligence working with the state, it would be, as we come up with a more fully funded plan. So it's a little bit of unique. They're going to put us on our own, but then they're going to kind of mandate out what we need to do. And so there's, there's lots of things to work out. I think politically, the state legislature has wanted to close their defined benefit program for the rank and file members that are state, state employees. And I think the good thing, Mr. Sandy, is that we still have an ability to separate ourselves and then figure out what the path forward is.
Storst, something?
Well, I was just going to add on to what Mr. Phelan said. So of the unfunded liability, 62% of it comes from state employees and 38% comes from the political subs. So he is correct that when you take out the, when you separate, I think we need to see the results of the study, what that means to political subs, and what would be needed as far as, you know, funding for a portion of the unfunded. And like Mr. Bernstrom said, they want this study complete by November 1, so they can ultimately make the decision. I believe that for the state employees as well as political subs, and what, what the results of that study will be, because there'll need to be, as part of this actuarial valuation of what those liabilities are as we separate out the political subs.
The reason for the November timeline on the study is because the state legislature is planning to go back in session at the end of the year as part of the redistricting. So they, they fully expect that the study's done to readdress this at the end of the year, based on what the study says.
Mr. Bernstrom, any other questions?
That separation of state and political sub-employees, it's a guardian knot. It's going to be a really tricky process, isn't it?
That has been brought up many times in committee.
It does create questions about the impacts, and I don't think we have all the answers to those questions yet. So that's why the study is very important. And just to clarify, they're not speaking of current employees. They would give the opportunity for current employees to either stay in their NDR defined benefit plan, pension plan, or move into their NDR defined contribution plan. It would be new hires after that 2023 date.
January 1, 2023.
Which we believe affects our ability to recruit and retain. Well, not retain, but recruit.
And they, they do say that the political subs DB plan will be in place. There was one amendment out there that was going to get rid of it, and that was taken away. But at, at the state employee level, yes, they would take that away. And we've seen the benefits of our DB plan. So I, I think it's fair to say, and I've seen, seen this in committee, watching the conference committees and just the committee meetings on this in general, there are more questions than answers. And that was even been brought up by many legislators that the study's probably the most important part of this, to answer some of those questions.
It was a real pleasure to get to work with yourself, and Todd, and the mayor, and all the department heads during the legislative session. And we did have some, especially in terms of funding, there were some positive outcomes. Yes.
Council President Sandy, I think we'll have to wait on that federal stimulus on, you know, there's a lot of, we're, well, we can't really see what's going on, but we think they're going to use that federal stimulus funds in hopefully one-time beneficial ways that will impact Grand Forks. So it'll be interesting what actually comes out of all these bills this week.
Yeah, I agree. We have some big projects that we want to move forward, and certainly, certainly hard to do it without the state kicking in their share. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bernstrom.
Thank you.
Item 3.2, there was COVID update for informational purposes, in case anyone's interested. Otherwise, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Weber, seconded by Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Good meeting. Thank you.